Everybody please rise to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. When my nation, under God, is invincible, will there be no justice for all? I'll give you order, a full call.
Mayor Westover.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walman.
Yes. Okay, we have any public forum? Not much consent agenda, any additions or corrections? Not many most to approve?
Second.
Second. Full call. Did you pick one K?
Well, I thought Mr. Walman was first. Who was second? Yeah. Okay, Walman.
Yeah.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stanhem.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Okay, we need to consider building permit application from Mike Schwabey. You want to tell us what you want to do?
Well, you want me to go up there?
You bet.
Okay, alright.
Then they can see you.
I think I dropped off to Teresa maybe some pictures kind of what this is going to look like. I also brought with me some floor plan things that I got from Home Yard last Friday. They're not complete, I just noticed a few things here that had the doors flinging the wrong way, that kind of thing. If you want to pass them around, look at them, you're more welcome. The first one is the lower level. And the second one is the upper level. Basically, we're going to kind of pretty much redo the whole house. We're going to gut the majority of what's there right now. The floor's got a little bit of sag over, we're going to try to straighten that out, see what's causing that. New roof, we're going to take the roof off of it and put a new roof on, get back to the shiny roof. And then, of course, the addition is going to be on it. It's going to be, it's going to look really different when we're done with it, I'll tell you that. Are there any specific questions you have, or any specific details you want me to go over?
No.
I just want to mention, I think I know all of you, I'm not too sure, I know Tom, frozen Muller, or Walman, I think I met him one other time. My wife and I used to, maybe I know you, I don't know. But my wife and I used to camp up here for years and years and years and years, and then we bought a house on Lake Panaella, so don't hold that against me. And we sold our camper, and we really miss being up here. So our plan is to eventually, as we grow older, probably spend our time between here and Lake Panaella. And not so much in Brea anymore. I'll sell our house in Brea, just to clear up, a lot of people are asking me what we're doing, that's what we're doing, so. But we're looking forward to getting back there. I kind of got tired of pulling the camper and setting it up and dealing with that kind of stuff, so we did the next best thing. We bought the, well, the house is supposed to be campground, so we can still go down there and visit with our old camp buddies. Or they can come visit with me, play whatever they want to do, so that's really our ultimate goal here, and that's the only reason where we're at, what we're doing right now, that's really what we're doing, so.
All's good.
Yep.
Everything's, setbacks are fine, everything's good?
Yeah.
Okay.
He just came and double or triple checked just a half hour ago, so he was up there and down there.
There's actually two setbacks on the right-hand side. One for the one-story and one for the two-story. The two-story setback is 22 feet or more, and the single story is four foot six inches. So there's two setbacks on the right-hand side. Which is why I corrected the wrong number again.
Very good. Make a motion to reset the building permit.
Second.
Full call.
Walman.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Stanhem.
Yes.
Welcome.
Alright, welcome back.
There you go, yeah.
I do have one other question I talked to Teresa about, and I just want to clarify this. I briefly talked to Dale last week, one day, when he was out on his walk, when he walked past there. My contractor would like to be able to access the campground side of the house. Sometimes get some stuff hidden out of there, and that would include taking out maybe two sections of the slip roof fence. Be able to drive up through there, and I promise you that we would fix it back to better than normal or than like once we were done with it.
Done that before.
Yeah, and that's what Dale had mentioned, it's been done before, in fact, I think he said he had done it before, so.
Yeah.
As long as you're all right with that, and there's an understanding with.
Just make sure that Teresa knows the date of your going.
Right, and it may be multiple days, you know.
Yep.
Just so she knows when.
Right, okay. When the campground, camping, you know, November-ish winds down a little bit, it's probably not such an important thing, then, but it is now probably. Just wanted to make sure we were okay with that, so.
Yeah, we're good.
Alright.
Welcome back, President.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm going to take these back with me to Chris' house. Thanks.
Administrative report.
As I begin week seven, I continue to work on getting to know staff, learning where everything's at, going through files, working on learning projects, both past and present. The budget and some state reports I've been working on. I've met many citizens, and I'm still working on remembering names. I can probably do faces better than names at this point, but. As you'll hear in Jason's report, we spent a lot of time in those last couple of weeks discussing small infrastructure projects and how we can best achieve getting those accomplished this fall. The chief and I have discussed nuisance properties, and initial contact has been made on several of them. I was able to get the Lakewood properties mode, and he's taking care of it with hope that the property owner continues through the fall. Jason and I met with Bob from Beechtree and Kim on Thursday, August 31st, to discuss finalizing the Northwest Water Main Loop and the Highway 175 water main projects. There are a few items on the Highway 175 punch list that need to be completed before acceptance. And Mr. Beanstra is sending a synopsis of both projects, so we can discuss finalization. I worked with Eric on a few building permits. We have a few variance requests in which public hearing has been scheduled for September 13th, publications in the newspaper this week.
What's today?
September 13th. Wednesday. We received close to 30 applicants for the billing clerk position. Ken and I kind of sorted through them, and we've got them down to six, and so we'll be conducting interviews on Thursday evening for that. Acceptance of applications for the public works position closes on September 15th, and I think we've gotten a few in for that. We had a pre-construction meeting today with SecWIS Engineering and Ten Point Construction on the street project that's going to be starting. We all walked the street with contractors and subcontractors to see what issues that potentially arise, and Jason will explain it a little bit further on concerns of the water main in that area. That's it for my report.
What are you expecting for the start of that?
The week of the 18th is what they're looking at. Here are the other couple of weeks. Approximately about a 45-day turn, and then working with the property owners in that area. There's a couple that want to change out their service lines and stuff, and when it's open, is a good time to do that, so.
Thank you, Teresa. Jason?
Alright. As you'll see in the bottom of your council packet, we did have an employee carrying every reds the nation, so therefore, we have an open position, and we'll deal with that. We fixed the alley in McClaren Fifth. We fixed the alley by the redemption center, there were some potholes, and some residents asked us if we could take care of those alleys, so we took care of those. We got the special meters for the new bank that they needed because of the sizes that they needed. It's not a standard home meter, so we got those in. Locates, imagine that. We got a county road sign ordered for, what's the address?
110 County Road.
110 County Road. They don't have a sign that says County Road, it says Quincy, I believe, and they requested that we get a road sign that says County Road, and they are the only residents on that road. So we did order that, that is on its way. We had a leak in the bathhouse by the parks that was fixed. We repaired the showers at the campground, they should all be working to include the footwash. However, I was informed this morning that apparently the ones that we fixed are not working. So we will investigate that, and the parts should still be under warranty. If it's something to do with the parts themselves, we'll get them swapped out, we do have some spares, but we'll investigate that a little bit more. The floats at the main lift station, out at the lift station, we had the company here to look at them. We did a whole bunch of tests, they added, they changed a couple of things with it. They should be working at this time, however, until we have the grease buildup and debris that is in that lift station sucked out or removed. The floats, they just kind of sit on top of it. It's kind of hard for the floats to tip when they sit on the crust, is what we call it. So that is in the works also, on getting that crust and debris stuff removed. Talked to the generator guy at the wastewater plant, our wastewater plant generator does not do routine monthly tests like it should to make sure that it's operating and will handle a load. So we've been working with B and K on that. They got, the generator gentleman is supposed to come back and check the program, figure out why it's not doing what it's supposed to do, and that's all part of that punch list item. Talked to business sewer about a storm drain that is collapsing, to get us a quote. I did get the quote. I got two quotes for doing slip lining it, and one quote was $40,000, the other quote is $24,500. I do have a quote for open trenching it from somebody. It's approximately $18,000. If we went in and used our equipment and sent our guys over there and did it, we're looking probably a couple grand cheaper, so probably right around $15,000 to $16,000. However, that does not include putting the individual's landscaping back together the way it is. And we all know who it is, it's one of our council members. So we're still working on getting the rest of the quotes and everything finalized before I bring it to you and you decide, but we are working on that, and when you deal with contractors, it takes a little bit of time to get the quotes all finalized and sent to you. Got quotes to fix the concrete from the water main breaks on Lakewood and Lake Street. I have three quotes currently. The guys have also been at the lift stations and cleaned the floats, and did our amp checks like we do every week. Worked with Teresa on fixing the grass issue over by Dixieland. Marked some trees that need to come down when we start doing trees. I think we approximately marked four of them that need to be removed, that are our trees. They're just kind of rotting away. We're going to start our sewer jetting the week of the 18th. Cricket from the Parks Department is going to come out and help us. That way we make sure we have enough people out there to do it, and hopefully we can get the whole town done in the week. If we cannot, we will push the rest of it to the next week. But our goal is to get the entire town sewer jetted. Quote to have the lift station, all the grit and stuff that sits in the bottom of the lift stations that the pumps eventually suck up, that eat up your volute and your impellers and stuff like that. To get a yearly contract to have them, they bring in a giant back truck is what it is, and suck all that grit and everything out there. And I'd like to have them start doing that after we do our sewer jetting, because we're going to push everything to the lift stations anyways, so let's get all that stuff out at the exact same time when we've pushed it there. We're investigating a dual service line behind 5 Penn Madison. Is it two houses, is it the empty lot? At the end of the day, whose issue is it? Is it a main, is it a service lines? We're still working on that. That'd be Mr. Peterson's old house.
They had a sewer problem, and they've talked about putting in a new service line, but with it being a dual service line, we need to know where it originates, because right now we can't tell. It's like, if they want to abandon one line and put in a new one, well, where's the other one coming from, because you can't, you don't want to have the same problem in another house, so.
Received today, actually, the quote to fix the punch list for the issues out at the wastewater treatment plant, the roof and everything, from S E E Construction. If you guys want to know the price, it's approximately $62,500 is what he's quoting for the roof. The roof, the door sweeps, the sanitary manhole casting, and with his mobilization cost and everything else, it comes up to about $62,500. The roof is a complete tear-off, and a brand-new roof being put on with that membrane, they're afraid that if they start to tear it, the insulation, everything's going to go away. So they're going to lay new insulation, brand-new roof, all that stuff.
Should.
Yeah.
We haven't signed off on it yet, so. That's all we've got, so I just.
Yeah, there's like $127,000 left in the project, and so, but we sent it off to the engineer today, and so we'll see, but then we'll have it in front of you hopefully on the 18th.
Correct. We are also going to get another quote because our lights out there, I call them streetlights, but the lights around the lagoon area, half of them do not work. He's not an electrician, so we have to get another quote from an electrician, which would also be part of the punch list item for that hundred and whatever thousand dollars.
Right.
But the majority of the stuff Cory with S E E can do. Our subcontracted out to a person that he trusts or has worked with previously on it.
Who recommended them?
Cory, I have used Cory previously in the past.
Okay.
And so have I.
We pushed brush pileup, we've worked on the mud volleyball pit court, I think. Mud volleyball pit court is probably as smooth as it's going to get to our abilities. I think it looks pretty good, there's probably a couple little low spots there that we could take a couple buckets of dirt and put in there, but for the most part, it's fairly smooth, and they had no problem parking on it all weekend. So. Scrap metal pile that we had behind.
Did you clarify for sure, is the bins going to seed that, or are they just buying the seed for us to seed?
I do not know.
I think we've always, cities always do.
And they pay for the seed, they pay. They used to in the past, they would, the bins, but.
I guess I never did all these years for, I paid, I paid the city.
The bins, but it used to.
Oh. Who's in charge of that now?
I don't know if Tyson Mike should have stole the president's.
I think it's that, right now, and the guy that works for Cory Weber is the vice president, Tony Sexton.
I get emails from Cal Peters on it.
I've been out for so long, I'm not sure, but I know that, wasn't 26th of October right, right, or something like that?
Yeah.
And that, so I would start with them too, and maybe.
I'll email, cut it.
I'm pretty sure they used to do that, but maybe I don't.
Because we have received, we get some rain.
Yeah, it would be different. Don't we have a tiller for our little tractor?
Yeah. There was a, it was tilled, wasn't it? Oh, I thought I seen a tiller in there.
Hey, the Parks Department has a little tiller on the back of their tractor.
Yeah. They used to, they tilled it last year, I mean, I think every year they normally till it, and then we seed it, so. That'll smooth it out a little bit more.
I agree, it needs to be more durable, doesn't it, because it's the most fragile.
I can't find where it was. The scrap, the scrap metal behind the shop was removed, along with the old used oil and the used oil filters. That's all gone and taken care of, we have quite a stockpile of used oil filters hanging around at the shop. No reason to keep those, so we got rid of those. Working with Trent and Austin, next week myself and Lester have to attend Okoboji Conference to maintain our certificates. We've got to go get CEUs, when we scheduled to go to this, we had another public works person. Austin has done public works in water treatment plant before, so we're going to do a refresher and have him do the daily testing, and if something major comes up, they'll call me and I'll come back from conference and dismiss conference. But we're making sure we have proper coverage while we're there. Led copper notifications and letters, went out and sent to the homeowners, and sent to the DNR per permit requirements. Electric pump we're working on, then getting us a service contract for the high-service pumps at the plant, and to replace the valves and the actuators that are going to be required to be replaced in order for us to backwash our iron filters. Mowed around the shop, mowed around the wastewater treatment plant. The trash basket out at the wastewater treatment plant is supposed to catch the debris and toilet paper and stuff like that. Had not been pulled since that lift station been brought into service. It has now been cleaned, we are on a monthly rotation, that will not happen again, we will make sure that that is maintained and cleaned. Replaced the meter on Lake Shore Drive, one of the residents. Walked Lake Shore Project today, one of the things that we were discussing on the Lake Project today is why we have that road up. The sewer main right there is old clay tile, it's in pretty rough condition. Why we have the road up, do we just replace it?
It's, I think it's supposed to be.
We discussed.
The manhole is.
I thought Dean said that the.
The hole, we were supposed to replace all the infrastructure underneath there, I thought that was in the bin.
No.
No.
The manhole is.
I thought Dean said that the sewer was in good shape, but it was the water line that needed attention.
So the water line is getting worked on, but Friday we had a resident call us that it was backing up to his house, so we jetted it. And then the local plumber, not local plumber, one of the residents is a plumber over there, he camered his service line out to our main, and you can see there's some cracking, and it's starting to collapse there.
I'm positive we talked about replacing the infrastructure underneath that road. And I thought it was, because they had to subcontract that out. Because we talked about, we're putting a brand-new road in, let's fix the infrastructure underneath, so we're not tearing it up right away.
Correct. A roughabout estimate, we're looking at about 209.2 feet is what it was measured out today. The sewer line is approximately about a hundred bucks a square foot, or a hundred bucks a foot, so we're looking at approximately just rough numbers without them, this is just rough number talking. Approximately anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 to replace that sewer line. And that's with them reconnecting each sewer main, our service line from each house back to the main, if that makes sense. I don't know if I usually that very well.
I don't, I mean, I, yeah, I can look it up and see, I mean, but, I mean, when we went over it today, there wasn't any in the plans, it wasn't to replace the entire line.
The manhole is being replaced. The whole manhole structure is being replaced, but the service line, or the main itself, from my understanding, was not part of the project.
Yeah, and there wasn't, I mean, there was no discussion today when we had that pre-con meeting that that was part of the project, so I don't know, I mean, again, Jason and I weren't here when that was done, so. Because that was going to be my advice, since you have the road open, you might as well take care of it, because.
Yeah, that's my friend.
We didn't do that on its own, now.
No, but, but, but that was a justification, we didn't do it on the other hand, from a previous employer. That was, what we didn't do on its own, I don't care, I know we talked about, I know there's something in that bed for replacing some stuff, because I know.
Yeah, there's, there's part of, I think there's part of the line when it connects to the manhole, but I don't, it's not the, it's not the entire line. I mean.
We definitely. We got it.
But there.
Isn't that a $150,000 or $160,000 project?
I would say, at least, yes.
You must do the first to tear it, a $150,000 grill in two years replaces it.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
Sorry, I didn't need to interrupt, but. It's frustrating.
Guess what, you know it's going to happen.
I'm getting the numbers, so we'll actually have the numbers. I do recommend that we do it.
I mean, if we kind of have council thought of that way to go, because I told them today, I said we would discuss it tonight, and I said if this is the way the council wants to lean, you know, what I recommend is that then we would get hard numbers, and then it would be presented as a change order on the 18th, where they get the project started. So that they can, you know, move along, because there's, because they talked about how many stop, you know, service line points we would need to have today, and, you know, those kinds of things, that makes a difference, so.
It's not as simple as just throwing the pipe in the ground.
No, I don't.
They got to have all the valves and everything in order to make it. So if you want to do a quick cost comparison, if we slip lined it, if we go off of the storm drain by Mr. Whitey's house, that's $24,500 for 151 feet. We're looking at about another 50 feet, we're looking at probably $35,000 to slip line it.
Might as well just replace it, let's all.
I agree, I just want to give you all the info.
Yeah, I appreciate that, sorry, I'm a little frustrated on this deal, because I thought it was all in there.
Trent here fixed the lights at the pickleball court, changed out breakers.
Finally got it.
Finally.
It was a struggle. I fought that thing for like a day and a half, so.
The timer got it. Changed out a couple of breakers at the campground. Working on planning quotes for running the 500-feet primary out of Lakewood, substation readings. Did some repair work on North State Road, fixed and replaced the seal on the ditch which, dug up some wire for the duplex by Harrison, set a pole in Northwest Town. Spliced some secondary wire at First and Second, refused a transformer. Did some landscaping cleanup on Vine Street, mowed and weeded. Cleaned and fixed the lights at the golf course, helped Parks Department with setting in the new teeter totter that we have out there. It looks really nice, there's a lot of.
Good truck.
Replaced transformer out at Rustic River, as the other one went out and needed a larger one with all the different activities and everything that they do out there. We needed to upsize it, but the other one quit anyway. Anyways, working on cost comparison for the boring compared to open trenching it, doing it ourselves. That is kind of pretty much everything we've done the last two weeks that I can remember.
And I will, and I'm going to add a note, because I had Bob, and I apologize, I don't know Bob's last name, but with the duplex out there, he was at my office today.
Carol. Love you, Carol.
Yes. And he is making progress forward. The concrete's been poured in the garage portion of it, they were installing garages today as he was sitting in my office, and he said he hopes to be able to continue moving forward on, you know, getting it complete. I kind of asked him for what he thought completion would be, and he didn't really, you know, say, but hopefully, you know. As long as he can keep everybody working, that was, his goal was to just keep working on it, so at least it's hopefully progress forward.
The last thing I forgot, Evan started today. He's our new lineman. Jacobs.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
I got one comment, and that's about our splash pad. I don't know how many times I broke by there and seen the water. And no kids out, that was last week while screwing. I don't, timer needs reset, or?
The diaphragms get clogged.
So the diaphragms get rust and sugar sand into them. We pay approximately, I want to say it was like $3.25 for each one of those.
So every time we change out a diaphragm, because it leaks, it costs us several hundred dollars.
How many hundreds of dollars of water?
Well, the only reason they didn't shut it off or change them out this time is because it was only like four days before we were going to shut it down for the season. So rather than change those out and then have them not work again in the spring when we turn it on, they just left it for those four days, and now it was shut off at 8:01 on.
Last night.
So now we have. It's been shut off for the season, and then we're going to try and look at what the solutions are, because somebody even told me today, which I hadn't had a chance to talk to Jason about, was that maybe the hub was having issues as well, where the main, because it was just constantly running, but I don't know that that's the problem. So we need to talk to Vortex and see what's going on with it, and try and figure it out here now that the season's done, and figure out what our solutions are, so that we just don't keep putting water down the drain.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Chris, police chief, what's some information for us?
Yeah, we got our little number sheet here. Three big numbers on it, you got community policing, we've done 131 contacts for the month between August 6th and September 5th, which is pretty good. 66 of those were personnel contact, just going up and just talking to people. Uh, we did forty security checks, business checks. And then the twenty-five, the extra patrols would be like the patrols through your campgrounds, that kinda stuff. Uh, calls for service, we had three hundred ninety-two calls for service. Uh, you can't see how that's, that's not everything that we've, we've done on, on these breakdowns, but it's a lot of some interesting parts. And then uh, we had a hundred and forty-six cases for the month. We got ten currently under investigation. There was five arrests, three charges filed. Uh, we've resolved thirty-four cases. Uh, nine of the, nine of the cases were forwarded to our investigator. Uh, yeah. Any questions on that?
Very busy.
Is that how you guys like to see it or would you like to see more or?
Looks good.
Is there more information you'd like to know or something else you'd like to know? Just let me know. Uh, the second page is, that, that's our uh, our city or, or ordinances. Going through like the grass, dry reach, all that kinda stuff. You guys can look through that and make sure that's kinda how you guys want things set. Typically wanna make contact first, try to resolve it before, before you get too far into it. And usually that'll, that'll, that'll help, it'll solve it most of the time. Uh, we'll try and work with them the best we can. And again, if there's anything else you want me to add on here or take off, let me know. I know I. Yeah.
I got one request to, to bring it back up. Dale mentioned some time back six months ago or something. Well, you guys are on patrol. Notepad jot down things, you know, that need to be addressed.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was.
If there's a street light out or if there's somebody's lawn that needs taken care of or a-anything, you know, that relate to Teresa and, and then it.
Yeah, and hopefully that's what this will do for us. We'll, I'll make sure and add the, the streetlights and that kinda stuff. Cause I, I haven't brought that up yet. Um, that's a good idea, I know.
And I think we talked about, I don't, I don't know what street it was, like six months ago that one of the curbs was knocked out. Probably got hit by a snowfall, no big deal, but we just need to grant to, you know, ask Jason Teresa's attention so they know to get on a list to get repaired.
Yeah.
I think that's the type of thing to think about or.
Okay.
Or if they see a tree, a city tree ranches down, let them know because they're not driving the roads like you get into.
Yeah, I think the last, I think Kristen would get a hold of like the city guy, I don't know, he probably won't hear.
I think that's what you were talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, just run and drive around, just make it kinda dump down.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we got our sheet that they got to where they, like, for our contacts, for our, our community policing and that can go along with it. So yeah, definitely.
Streetlights would be a good thing.
We'll add that, we'll add that.
Cause you are a driver on a night.
Yeah, we don't, we don't see them at night.
Well, Jason and I have been going, I mean, as we've been, you know, driving around and, I mean, we're checking trees one day, I mean, it was like, so, I mean, I know there's yards and different things, so yeah, I mean, we've been kinda trying to start doing a better job of keeping our eye out on different properties and.
Yeah, we got our guy here now to, to be able to really, so we can, he can focus on that and really take care of that part of it and I, I think he started out pretty decent. So, uh, yeah, and I'll add those things and we'll make sure we get it done.
I mean, thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Nice, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, Barry, I think the council has some questions.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you have the answers.
I hope so. Um, I'm Barry Moose, for those who don't know me. Um, dad is at night. So here I come. Um, are, were there questions? I have.
Uh, what the, for these as a soil, I, lawn, lawn contacted me and I went down there with lawn and he showed me everything. And I think I even reported back to Teresa that it was fine.
Well, I guess.
There's a misconception.
Yes.
So when it said in our packet, it said curb and gutter and the curb was like, let's just say ten foot on the, this end, south end. And we had, the bill was for forty foot of curb and gutter and then your dad showed me the rest of the stuff they put in around that storm sewer as well.
Correct.
And it was, it was, your dad informed me that it was shot and agreed upon by John and Scott to replace it all at that time.
Correct.
So that's, so when we looked at the bill and seen it, it's like, well, you know, there's only ten feet of curb that was replaced. But then your dad explained, no, all the gutter was replaced as well in that forty foot.
Correct.
That's a misconception. I talked to your, your dad, it was nice enough to come by. Uh, Teresa, was that last week one day? And then I come by, I told Teresa, I went down with lawn and he explained it should be good.
Correct. I guess the reason we asked to be on the agenda was because of that misconception and how it was reported in the paper. We did look up some previous bills. We charged forty dollars a foot, which was roughly, I wanna say eighteen hundred dollars. I don't remember the exact figure.
Correct.
On the previous bill from two thousand twenty-one that we looked up, the price per foot was forty-five dollars a foot. That was before the change order. After the change order came to seventy-two dollars and thirty-two cents. And I guess the reason I'm here is it's on video for one, um, just to get it out there in the public. Cause this does hurt our business when it's in the paper recorded like that. And we want you to know that we're not trying to hurt anybody, I guess, or screw you for, lack of a better term. But um, we, we try and do a good job, I guess, guys. We try and do it as a re, at a reasonable price and uh, hope you continue working on this.
I think you guys have always treated the city very well.
Yeah.
In my mind, we have donations, we, we've done for the city since I've been out of council.
Well, I hope not. I appreciate that.
Well, we're sorry for it, for it out in the paper and the papers.
Well, and I realize it's nobody's fault here. It's just one of those things that happens and we want it on the record that. We're not, we're not trying to.
On this instance, the storm sewer was right in the middle driveway.
Yes.
And the storm sewer was. Decurbing. And I think, I think we need a policy in place. If a citizen wants to do a new driveway, he's the one that tears out that curb and gutter. I think the citizen needs to replace that curb and gutter enough to see. Cause if it's perfectly a good curb and gutter, prior to the homeowner wanting to upgrade something on his property. I, I think the citizen needs to replace them.
And that would be standard policy, is that, you know.
And I don't know if we have that in a policy.
Well, I mean, technically, I mean, that's just, you know, if, in this situation, it was the holes, it was the storm sewer and there's a, there was a reason why.
It got replaced and paid for by the city.
Yeah, but, and normally they go down, they, I mean, when they replace a driveway, normally it goes down to, you know, the gutter. They might make some accommodations on the, the curb as they smooth out or if they make something wider and that might, you know, but it's all on the homeowner. There's nothing that, this situation was kind of an exception to what I would call the rule.
I agree.
I wanna say in my general that that's how it goes, I guess. Um, for instance, my old house.
Yeah.
We did do that at my old house. We replaced a little bit of curb, that was just part of the project. It was probably four feet, I guess, might be.
On, on, on my house now, you know, I, I went out to the edge of the street, took out the gutter net, but it was improvement for myself, so I paid for it and also.
Yeah, exactly.
I.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry for the.
We'll, we'll get you a check. Okay. Okay, we wanna, we wanna have another bag tournament.
I want a motion to approve the closing of the fourth street.
Second.
Second.
No call.
Frank?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Waltman?
Yeah.
That one?
Yes.
Okay, that is a two-year contract proposed for the end of lift station cleaning. What would the council like to do?
So what that proposal is, they're gonna come do seven lift stations in the spring. And they're gonna come and do the other six, well, they're gonna do seven because we're gonna hit one lift station, especially the bad ones that we, or the bad one, which would be out in our provost area. We're gonna hit that one twice a year. The contract gives us a little better break than hiring him to just come over and do it. If he comes over and just does them all in one day, it's about seven thousand dollars. When we sign a contract like this, he gives us a little bit better of a break.
This is getting rid of that crest you talked about.
This is getting rid of the crest out at the main lift station and this is every lift station in town that we have. From grit, grease, any of that stuff that sits in the bottom that our pumps eventually suck up and gets rid of it. That way the lift station and the pumps will last longer because we're not sucking that grit, is what we call it, into the pumps and the impellers and the balloons. And now you're not basically taking a gritting material and running around metal. And we all know when you take that and run it around metal, it just wears it away. So uh, we did get two quotes. This is the cheaper of the two quotes.
You've worked with these.
Rehab systems is.
Yes. Rehab was the cheaper of the two quotes.
I think it's good, uh, I think it's worth, is this a one or two-year deal?
That is a two-year contract.
I think it's worth trying to start with and see what it helps us go on.
It's just like everything else. It's a maintenance issue.
Correct.
Preventive of the post crack.
Yes, and that's what we're trying to get to is preventive versus.
I make a, we accept that guy.
I'll second.
Pick one, Jay.
Uh, surprises. I'll read about it.
No call.
F man.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yes.
Okay, we're going, so we have to do some boring out there at the addition, Trent?
Uh, so we were doing uh, cost comparison of hiring the boring guy to come in and do it or send in um, our guys out there with the Mini X and doing it. The boring guy, he'll be on site for approximately four hours. It's six thousand dollars for him to do it. If we go out there and we do it open trench style, yes, it's gonna save us about a thousand bucks. When you add in our employee wages, what we would rent our equipment out for, so that's what I based that off of, is the equipment rental. And then the seating side of it, um, which I'll be the first person admitting myself and none of my guys are seating experts. Um, we would probably till it and put grass seed down. It's, in certain cases, the five hundred feet boring, um, it just seems, I'm not taking the guys away from doing other stuff for probably about a week and a half. And, cause that's what they would be doing.
Where are we coming from? Where's, what's?
Well, we kinda have two options. Uh, the shorter option and it'll be going across private. I haven't talked to the landowners yet, but it would be coming straight, from straight north of Lakewood along like that. What I would call an alley, but I don't, I think it's a private, actually a private drive. There's a sexualizer right at that corner. We have, it's pretty much full. We have a red, a white and a blue that's open. So we would just take a wider of blue and then we would set a transformer somewhere amongst that Ryback addition that would feed all those houses. Uh, we've already had one or two people, I know one for sure, I think two people that have already contacted us about electric service. So what I'm thinking is, I mean, I can, I can come across the road to feed the one house right now. But this is just kind of a future, we're, we're gonna need it eventually.
Is this the five lots that they sold off on the north, on the south side?
South side of Lakewood, yes. Which I think they call that the Ry, Ryback.
Ryback, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so we're, basically we're hoping that we can get the primary there, set a transformer, and then that transformer will feed those five houses.
So the idea is to do what I'm calling it, doing it right and make sure there's service there for everybody as those lots get sold versus we'll take care of this one, we take care of this one, we take care of this one.
We're, the problem.
All of them are sold.
Yeah, it's, the board out there says they're all sold.
I just know that he's had a couple asked for electrical service and this would just be getting it all done.
Well.
Where, where is our easement throughout there?
Well, the easement is actually, if you go, let's see, the east of Lakewood, the easement would actually be like, what I call like Bender's Alley. That would be technically our easement.
And that's where, is that where they're, it's where they're putting the fiber line.
Cornbill is going on the other side of the houses and putting their hand, handholds there and stuff. So, and we have pulled in with, with Cornbill, I haven't talked to Cornbill about that, but I mean, that is, that is further. That'll be roughly a thousand feet probably, eight hundred for sure.
But if we don't have an easement to go from on the private drive side.
That's, and I'm not sure if, you know, if, I'm not even sure who owns north of the Lakewood. I think it's Lyndon, I believe owns that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, it's that Lakewood Partners Group, yeah.
Okay, so.
Where they put all the dirt in.
Which we have a primary that runs through there already, that feeds the three-phase transformer for Lakewood. So I guess I, I need to talk to him. I just wanted to get approval before I really kinda did that, I guess. If not, we'll just have to go on our easement, which will take us a lot further and a lot longer.
I don't remember where our utility easement was for them, that plot in that addition.
I thi, I think it's.
There's one, if you go, if you go basically, come out of Lakewood on the south side, you go right up, basically next to the building is where our easement is and then it runs back to the north. Along that, what I call an alley.
To the west of Lakewood.
No, to the e, it goes to the east.
Oh, it goes to the east and right along the building?
Okay. Goes east out of the building and then it goes north along that, like what I would call Bender's Alley.
Then there's the only.
But before you bore you, make sure in the right easement.
Oh, absolutely. Yep, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get approval, so, and I know.
Bring us the map if you want me to.
Go ahead.
I heard him say get the Mini X can open trench it. What's wrong with our trencher?
Uh, to be honest, uh, it hasn't left the shop since I've been here over two, I mean, we just don't, I guess we've never used it. I don't know. I, I don't know if it works. I don't know, you know? I've never seen it leave the shop, so I don't know.
I just know back when the city bought that trencher, that's what it was designed for, is to trench in power lines like that. And if we're gonna come from direction straight here, Bender Alley.
Yep, yep.
That'd be a perfect way to trench that in instead of Mini X getting in or trying to bore that far.
Yep, I mean, I, like I said, I don't even know if it runs. I, it hasn't, hasn't moved one inch since I've been here, so.
Pretty expensive piece of equipment that to use.
Be sitting there.
It's all I'm saying.
No, I.
Yeah, I would think that would be much more feasible to trench in electric line than a Mini X digging.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you.
That's a, that's a Vermeer if I remember right. Love to find out if it works or not.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, I'll buy it. Pretty high price showing from the city. Doesn't work, remember? Uh, but, yeah, I think we, we wanna make sure we, I think we should look up where that plot is from Ryback stuff and make sure we're going in our easements. Cause we have no idea what the plans are for that. And that is a private drive coming through there from the north to the south, south to north.
Yeah.
And I don't know what their plans are.
We called to locate it and basically just to see what the utilities were through there. And from the looks of it, what I seen this morning, basically it's just us. So just the electric right now.
Feed that, feed that.
Feed what feeds Lakewood and then there's nothing really um, on the east side of that street, which would be like Lakewood Drive or.
So we probably just need to really probably revisit where the easement is, where some of the other utilities are going. And then have a discussion on
Yeah.
what we really wanna do.
Cause I agree, we just was get service there for all of them.
Well, I, I mean, I think so.
And approve that plot.
Right.
Right.
And unfortunately, everything along, along Lakewood is pretty full. All our transformers are full, all our handholds are full. I mean, we have room, like I said, we have room to feed the one house right now, but eventually that doesn't help us for the future.
On the, across from where that garage sits there, across from uh, like Wayne Nielsen's place, you know, you know where I'm talking about? I'm gonna call that to the west, but I could be wrong.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You know where I'm talking about?
Yep.
You know, there, there's lots plotted there too. How are, how are we servicing them?
We have a grave, actually like kinda right in front of there, I believe. I'll have to, I'll check my map, but I'm pretty sure we have a grave there and that has a couple of open spots for those, so.
I'm wondering if there's not a utility easement coming around that way to feed more of that as well. I don't know.
Very well could be. We need, yeah, I need to sit down and look at the easements. We, I just need to take the time to do it.
For some odd reason, I could be totally wrong with this, I probably am, but I thought in that plot, our utility easement is like next to that road that comes around.
Could be.
So somehow, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, cause I know one time Dean was talking about trying to service where Gary Manning had built them garages.
Yep.
Or Bender's Alley.
Yep.
Feed that from way down by Lakewood somewhere. He wanted to go way down there and then they didn't have to, but we have, I think we should look into that, like you said, if you're sure. Does that make sense, everybody?
Absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we have, they have approved the resignation of Matt Sheffler. I'll make that motion, sorry. No call.
Who is the second?
Eight.
Eight.
Stike?
Yes.
Waltman?
Yep.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, nothing else? Your motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Meeting adjourned.
When's his last day?
Uh, he is using his personal days this week. He will be back on Monday for his last day.
Um, Whitey was going to. There is, I know that.